Call this Ray McNeam to order, call roll.
Mayor Querem.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mayberry.
Here.
Gomez.
Newman.
Here.
Please stand and join us in the public room.
The flag is lifted to the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're starting out tonight on public comment, we have the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Yeah, so just make sure the mic, you know, put it on and...
Button on the top, just push it down, make sure the green light comes on.
And you just need to state your name.
Working.
There you go.
Okay, my name is Matt May, I'm the Chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. I'm joined tonight with Brian Church, Luanne Elliott, Michael Ziering, also on the committee. We just felt like it's probably about time we reintroduce ourselves and maybe reacquaint ourselves with new members soon to be seated up there. But I thought I would go over some of the things we have done, some of the things we're working on. I will try to kind of rapidly go through some of the grants we've applied for, most unsuccessfully, but a few successfully. And just to kind of reacquaint everybody with what we're doing and let you know that we do appreciate the opportunity to get together monthly and try to make things better, you know. So I will start by kind of going through some of the things we've done in the past. A few years ago, we collaborated with the Tisqwa Historical Society to create a route map that touched on country schoolhouses in and around Tisqwa, although that has nothing to do with the city, but it was one of the projects we worked on. We've also created cycling maps that highlight barn quilts around the county. Those maps are posted on the City of Princeton website. Every May, May is sort of Bike Month, and every May, we promote a Bike to Work or Bike to School activity. We are working on something like that for this year. It's sort of a selfie involving, so it's socially safe. But we've done that 2018, 19, not last year, and then again this year, we're going to try again. We created a logo for our committee back in 2017, which has been used in various ways. It's on our Facebook page, there's a bike rack, which I'll get to a little bit later, but there's a bike rack that will have that logo here in town. Probably the most substantial thing we've done is we got Ed Barsati from Ride Illinois. Ride Illinois is a bicycle advocacy group, and we got Ed Barsati to come down here and produce a bike plan, which was approved by City Council in 2019, I think. And some of the initial phases of that plan are scheduled for implementation this spring. There's some signs up already that, you know, share the road signs and things of that nature. We have applied for grants multiple times to try to implement more and more of the plan. Also, in May of 2018, 2019, we had a youth bike rodeo, which we did that in collaboration with the...
Illinois Youth Extension Office and...
Yeah, so Paramecial and Illinois...
James Illinois Extension Office.
There you go. Obviously, we did not do that last year. In 2018, we did a walkability study of the City of Princeton to help identify areas that maybe needed attention or could be improved upon. Some of those things have been since improved. Several of us from Princeton, myself included, Brian and Rick Brooks, who was with us, we went to the Ride Illinois Annual Bike Summit, where they have all kinds of... Everything bicycling, you know, they have advocacy, they have workshops, they have... And we attended that a few years ago. They didn't have... Last year, it was a virtual event, so we didn't do it. We do, we did create a Facebook page at one point, and we do utilize that somewhat. In March of 19, we had a Cycling for Women night, where the folks from Mead's Bike Shop in Sterling came and did instruction and really gave a whole lot of information specifically geared toward women and cycling. Last year, one of the things we did not get to do was the Little Free Library Bike Tour. It sort of created on the principles of letterboxing, where there'd be passports in each free library, and as you go along, you can stamp your passport. That has since been made sort of a self-directed tour, so if somebody's interested in doing that, and it is kind of a family-friendly thing to do. It still can be done, we have a link that I know that's been on our Facebook page, and I think we're hoping to put it on the City of Princeton website at some point. Yeah, so we're also currently seeking a Bicycle Friendly Community designation from the League of American Bicyclists. They have a very exhaustive application process, which we have just recently undertaken, and we hope to at least apply for the first time next February. Last fall, we did implement a casual bike ride, like a group bike ride, and it was a Monday night ride, and this year, when we get that going again, it'll probably be a Thursday night ride, but it's open to the public. We don't really promote it, or aside from word of mouth, but we did get a few riders. There was a couple of nights where there was riders of various ability, and so we did break up into, you know, an easier group and an intermediate group. The easy ride is around eight to 10 miles. We don't go terribly fast, there's some instruction ahead of time. This year, we're also trying, we're thinking about starting it... We were starting at Ziering Park this year, we'd like to do it, start and end at the parking lot by the bike place behind Spoons. And sort of have safe socialization at local establishments afterward this year, which is something we did not do last year. So that's just kind of a, you know, a brief summary of things we have done, things we're working on. And then, as far as grants we've applied for... We're currently, we have a grant that's pending currently, and it's a pretty large one, and it's with ITEP, the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, and the Illinois Department of Transportation. It would provide funding for a sidewalk slash bike path that would connect the missing links between back-to-back on-road and approximately the Shell Station north of there. We already have sidewalk going over the interstate as far north as Super 8, but that gap, we feel like, once it's filled, you know, there's already people that bike commute to the north end of town, even north of Interstate 80, there's people that already do that. This would just further enhance the safety aspect and maybe allow others, and there's a lot of employers up there at that end of town. So we're really hoping that we succeed with that grant. It's an 80-20 grant. We, we applied for a Tiger Grant a few years ago. We, it was unsuccessful, they provide federal funds targeting rural areas to enhance national transportation initiatives. That was to extend the bike path from City County Park, or no, from basically Super 8 to City County Park and Red River Bridge. That sort of ties into another grant that we applied for with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. We withdrew our application for the IDNR, you know, per the IDNR request. We have applied for that twice, if I'm not mistaken, and although we haven't been successful yet, we do anticipate success eventually. And that would get a bike path north of Super 8 to City County Park, at least. You know, we, the Department of Natural Resources has identified areas where we could make adjustments to eventually succeed in acquiring that grant. We successfully applied for a grant through Safe Routes to School. We unsuccessfully, unsuccessfully applied for a grant from Cliff Bar, a small grant for some bike repairs stations, if I recall. We applied for a grant through Federal Recreation Trails Program, that was unsuccessful. Unsuccessful application with America Blocks, the Dre House Foundation grant we applied for. We applied unsuccessfully also with a People for Bikes Community Grant. That was a little bit of a larger one, it was for a rapid-response flash beacon, which would have been placed at Main Street and at the intersection of Main Street and Clark Street, and that's a school crossing. Part of the bike plan identifies that intersection as, you know, would be made safer and whatnot with this beacon. We did not get that grant. We'll keep applying for grants for that, though. We applied, well, we, we had a hundred hours of service grant through the Princeton Rotary Club, which we have done most of. That was a grant where they cleaned up sidewalks, mostly around the high school, and the remaining hours left on that service grant will be used this spring to clean up more of that sidewalk toward Lincoln School. We successfully applied for a grant through the Department of Economic and Community Opportunities. I think the figure amount, the dollar amount was 25,000, and that is going to, in part, fund a sidewalk from Homer Street to Fifth Street. And I think that's, the ground is supposed to be broken on that, I assume this year. We unsuccessfully applied for a grant through AARP Community Challenge. And then, we did succeed in acquiring a grant from Compeer Financial. They gave us $2,500 to have some bike racks made, and they're sort of a artwork bike rack type thing, they're not all the same, and I am going to kind of go over what they look like and where their proposed placement is. There were also private donations that went in to cover the balance that the grant did not cover for those bike racks. Okay, so we have, I think, seven bike racks altogether from that Compeer grant. There's two racks with the numbers five and six on it that are eventually going to be placed in front of the Festival 56 Building. There is a hoop-shaped rack that has the City of Princeton logo on it, and that will eventually be placed in front of City Hall. There is a rack shaped like a bike with the City of Princeton logo on it that will go as Soldiers and Sailors Park. There is a rack shaped, another one shaped like a bike with a Rotary symbol on it that will go to Rotary Park Southeast Corner, Long Beach Street. There is a rack shaped like a hitch with a coffee mug on it that will end up in front of Flowerhouse, and a rack shaped like a hitch with a fork and knife on it that's going to be installed in front of Spooners. The seventh rack has the Bike Commission logo on it, and the location isn't fully determined yet, but it's probably going to be over by the Rotary Building. So, and the installation of those racks is scheduled for spring, this spring, so those should start showing up soon, hopefully. As I said before, we do have links for various bike rides, the Little Free Library Bike and Walk Tours, one of them. And we have several other routes that, you know, if you use an app and ride with GPS, you can load on your phone, it gives you turn-by-turn directions. Some are already on the City of Princeton site, and we continue to make more of those. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt, Brian, Michael, Luanne. Appreciate everything you guys do. I know that all of our commissions here in the city that have been set up in the last couple of years are all very active in making Princeton a better place and improved going forward, so I appreciate all the hard work you guys put in, everything you're doing. I know it's, you do it on your volunteer time, it's greatly appreciated. I know that Ray, Mayberry sits in on some of your meetings.
Chris is there every time.
Chris is every time, so, yeah, so it's a good working relationship between our commissions and then the city, and we appreciate everything that, everything you guys do. So we're not going to let you leave, you got to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for my time. Thank you. The grants are very competitive, but we will continue to submit.
Is Rick working on those two, is Rick Brooks?
Yeah, we work with, we work with anybody that wants to put the verbiage together and help submit, so.
Yeah, the NCICG has been really helpful in identifying grants for us and bringing them to our attention.
We worked with them a couple of years ago on it with an IDNR grant, because we were out looking between Super 8 and, and I think there's some, are there engineering plans?
That was the one they asked us to withdraw because they needed an engineering study completed, but they, they were very favorable in terms of funding that project, but they asked us to withdraw at the time, so.
Well, the Dre House Foundation as well, you mentioned that grant, you know, we applied for a grant there, they helped us get the North and South End Business Districts on the National List of Historic Places, so they're very familiar with Princeton, so hopefully that's success there as well.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other further public comment?
Yes, I...
Just your, just your name.
My name's Doug Hanson, I have a, I don't know if this is the right time in the meeting to address this or not, but I knew it and all this, I called Pete a couple of weeks ago and voiced my concern with the problem I have up on my house. Is this the time to talk about it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I live on West Railroad Avenue, across from where the city has their, where they put the trees and all that stuff, and there's a burn, it's been going on there for about a month. Every year, I've lived there for eight years, we go through fires every year, this year's really bad, and if the wind's blowing in the correct direction, it's in our house in where my mother-in-law is, apartment. We moved there eight years ago, it's, I don't know if you guys are ever familiar with driving out there and seeing the stuff that's out there, there's a lot of piles of dirt with cement in it, it's just a real eyesore anymore. It's getting worse, like, all the time, I don't know if we can address to have that, what we can do about it, because I don't want to live, have my property value go down. Anybody that want to buy has to go through a month of smoke every year or more, it's really not acceptable. So I don't know what we can do about it, but...
Well, we'll certainly take a look at it, because you're not the first one that's brought it to our attention or has brought it to my attention, you know, and I know what's happened out there this year, apparently there was an internal combustion the start of the fire, and apparently, from what I've been told, there's nothing that really can be done about it, you can't put water on it.
Well, that's what I've been told, too.
Yeah.
It's started in, like, seemed like four or five spots, kind of odd, and seemed like that was normal, but...
Yeah, we're going to have to take a look at that, because you're right, it does, I know it happened last year, I can remember, or it was the year before, because I know it does happen, and it's a, it's a pretty large area, and we are, we are, there's a lot of rush and stuff that's dumped out there, but we'll have to take a look at it and see what, what can be done going, going forward.
Because it's really unacceptable, I mean, it really, I'm, I'm not a bitcher, I don't complain about anything, but it's unacceptable to have to live through a lot of smoke every year, it's just, I know if I had a, if I had my property and I was burning a bunch of stuff for, I burned for a month and my neighbors were bitching, they have a right to bitch, and they should be on my ass. Well, it's my property that's getting smoked out all the time. So I appreciate you letting me talk about this.
There's got to be a solution to it, you know.
We've got to find a better solution to what it is, because right now, it's not good. All right, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Doug. Any other public comments? I think we're going to Commissioner Newman for the approval minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on March 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Gomez. Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. I'll go to approval invoices, the City Clerk Nelson.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances for this period, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $79,294.89. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $200,183.48. And in the Department of Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $744,421.24. Mayor, all council members have, present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and are now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. I'll go to regular business and City Clerk Nelson about this.
So next on the agenda is the second and final reading for ordinance O-21-004. This is an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property no longer needed by the public body. Again, this is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-004.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-21-005. This is an ordinance amending city code, increasing the bulk water rates. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-005.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-21-006. This is an ordinance amending city code, increasing garbage collection rates. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-006.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-21-007. This is an ordinance amending city code, increasing bulk sewage disposal rates. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-007.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is approval of a preliminary plat of re-subdivision for the Covenant Children's Home property. The diagram and plat was included in your package, and all council members have reviewed this ordinance, or it's not an ordinance, has reviewed the plat and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the preliminary plat for re-subdivision of Covenant Children's Homes.
Second.
Motion's been second, Pete.
Anybody familiar with the Children's Home knows that it's a very challenging campus, it's about, I don't know, what, 17 acres range in total. Their mission at the Own Place Address in Princeton has pretty much come to an end, and the Children's Home Board is interested in parceling off the remaining campus to put the land back into productive use. Problem is, a lot of buildings have already been built there and have been there for almost 100 years in some cases. So, prior as they might, they hired an engineer, the engineer had parceled off the remaining campus to the best of his ability, and that was presented to the Plan Commission last week. The Plan Commission decided to approve the preliminary plat. They asked that the Board continue to work on depiction of how the utilities will be treated for the remainder of the campus, and how they'll be split up to serve all the new parcels that will be coming off of this division of land. So basically, the, the, the land with all the buildings on it is being parceled up, the land that contains the baseball field and the gardens and things like that will still stay in the possession of the Children's Home Board for now, but they'll be back in April or May with a final plat that will have the remaining data that the Plan Commission requested. And if that meets, if that meets the standards that the Plan Commission is looking for, then they'll approve that plat and they'll come in front of you also.
Any questions? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mayberry.
All abstained.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the preliminary plat of re-subdivision for Liberty Village. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this plat and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the preliminary plat of re-subdivision for Liberty Village.
Second.
Motion's been second, Pete.
This is the most for re-subdivisions. I don't, I don't even know if we ever had one come in front of us before, but anyway, Liberty Village is a pretty meticulously planned subdivision to begin with. They build these subdivisions all over the United States. They're very fond of the Princeton location that they have, they have noticed that traffic is starting to cut through the subdivision in a manner that disturbs the peace, in their view, and so they, they prefer to redesign the lower half of their subdivision in order to calm traffic, and actually eliminate traffic, because they're going to, they're proposing to put a gate up on their street. There'll still be access by pedestrians to walk through the subdivision and enjoy the amenities that it has, but vehicular traffic will be restricted. They also are renaming one of the streets, they had a, originally back in 2010, they had a street that was approved called Freedom Lane, and we already have a Freedom Lane or a Freedom-type street not too far off, outside the city limits on Backbone Road, and in order to prevent confusion with 911 calls, they decided to rename that street to Liberty Avenue, and then they've added a, or they renamed, they've kind of reconfigured one of the other streets. So, I guess the other, you know, the other part of the subdivision plat they're reconfiguring is over on the east side of their subdivision, they're taking two existing lots and they're combining it into one to make one large lot. So altogether, they've, they're, they're taking about four, four lots out of production, so to speak, and redesigning the lower half of their subdivision to accommodate some of these concerns they've had over the last few years. The Plan Commission reviewed those elements, the city engineer was present at that meeting, and believes... and, um, believed that, uh, the proposal was reasonable in nature. And so they will be coming back in either April or May to submit their final plan, um, that will also come in front of you. So tonight is just to determine whether you approve the preliminary plat.
Motion has been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Pete. Go to see the manager report.
Uh, first thing on the agenda here is monthly financial report for December. Again, just keep in mind it's December's report, so we are a little behind on these. The biggest, uh, item on that one I'll point out, and we probably went over this in our previous meeting with the council, but sales tax again for December was well above last year's numbers, so that trend was still, um, up. Now, you will notice, uh, in the numbers, you'll see some of the expenditures seem to be outweighing the revenue. At this point in the budget cycle, we haven't done the transfers. There's some internal transfers that we do from one department to another. Those have not occurred yet at, at the point of this being put together, so that will skew some of the numbers. Um, on the last page of it, uh, or not the last page, but towards the end of it, the number of calls, I usually like to report the number of police and fire calls for the month of December. Total calls for fire department, one hundred and sixty-nine, and the police department total numbers, three hundred and ninety-one. So December was a busy month. UCOM had a total of a little over fifty-five hundred calls just for December, so. Um, next I have the police and fire pension reports are included in your packet for January of two thousand twenty-one. And then you'll also have in there a little bit of a summary of a recent grant that we were awarded from the Morton Arboretum. Um, actually funded by the Department of Natural Resources, IDNR and USDA Forest Services. Uh, we applied for this grant. We have a new tree committee that is meeting. They met last week and they are very anxious to get started on this project. Um, the grant itself is a fifty-fifty match, so the grant award amount will be getting ten thousand. We need to match with ten thousand and will primarily, uh, be used for the purpose of completing a tree inventory. Uh, we felt this was vital at this point in time, especially after, after, after the duration. What impacted the trees with that storm? Um, why were those specific trees impacted? Was it the type of tree? Was it the age of the trees, whatever? Um, so they're gonna do a complete tree inventory and then develop an urban forest management plan out of that. And that will help us going forward with encouraging residents to plant certain types of trees that are hardy for this area rather than ornamental type trees that may not be as strong. So it'll be a process, but I will let you know that the committee is going to be meeting with, probably via Zoom, a Zoom call with the arborists that will be coming out the first part of May to do the inventory. It's part of the grant. Uh, so you'll see probably a group of people walking around looking up in the trees and that's what they're doing. They're doing the inventory, so. Uh, they are looking for anybody that wants to volunteer in any, any of the efforts with the tree program to, to, to let us know. So, um, it'll be exciting, interesting to see what comes out of this, so.
Any questions? Thank you, Teresa. Uh, under my report, I have a proclamation to read. The city of Princeton will observe Junior Achievement Day on April first, two thousand twenty-one as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of Heartland for empowering our young people to their own economic success. Junior achievement of the Heartland's educational contribution equips our young people to become the next generation of productive employee, employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Princeton. It is fitting for parents, educators, businesses and other members of the community to join in junior achievements effort to ensure the future success and economic health of our young people and the communities in which they live. Therefore, we, the city of Princeton, do hereby proclaim official recognition of April first, two thousand twenty-one as Junior Achievement Day in the city of Princeton, Illinois. And we have a board appointment.
I move that we appoint Kerry Cobain to the historic preservation commission for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments? Coral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
So a couple, uh, uh, updates. First of all, Columbus Street, uh, Columbus Street has been closed since, um, March first. I've been watching that. I've been down Columbus Street and Marion Street more times in the last couple of weeks than I probably have in my entire life, checking it out and seeing if there's any issues or problems up there, and there have been none that I have seen, uh, at all. Very little traffic, uh, completely, very little traffic. Um, the, uh, the only issue that we've got, and I've, I've talked with the owner of Spoons, is a deliveries that are being made to the rear of the store. She's got a couple of delivery trucks that come in there a couple of times a week and they have to, they're semis. So the, uh, what they're doing is they're, uh, they've, they've been working on different ways of making deliveries. They think they might have it worked out if they come down the alley or Field Street, actually, and they turn up in Columbus. You can park alongside the curb where we have parking and it takes about fifteen minutes or so for them to make their delivery, so. They're gonna let us know how that, uh, how that plays out. In the meantime, I've talked with a lot of people, you know, the street's been closed. You know, we've talked about reopening it on April first, but if this is working out the way it is, this is our last meeting. Uh, for three weeks, we won't have another meeting until April fifth, I believe. So I'm wondering if we should just, uh, if we're gonna continue with this, if we just leave the street closed. I don't see any reason why we would reopen it. If things continue to work out, we get a good feedback from, uh, from Spoons regarding deliveries. So I'm just kind of throwing it out, getting everybody, everybody's thoughts.
Yeah, do you, Mayor, agree with that? Make it official in April sometime?
Well, we, we'd have, we'd have to have an ordinance to close it permanently, so we would have, we could have an ordinance ready for the May, April fifth and then the second meeting to close it permanently. And, uh, of course, you know, even though the street is closed permanently, we go through with this project and we've got, there's a lot of plans. The Princeton Arts Commission is involved in this. The Princeton Historic Commission is involved in this with as far as plans and what's going to be done with that, uh, area up there. Um, it's, it's, it's gonna be a quiet improvement over what we see today. And Columbus Street, a lot of people, I think there's a misconception, perception that people have, if you look down Columbus Street from Main Street, you know, we're making, we keep talking, we're making Columbus two-way, and they look down that and they say, there's no way this could be widened up for two-way traffic. And you can't. I mean, it'd be safe. There is no room. There, you could do it, but it would not be safe for two-way traffic down Columbus. But once you get beyond Spoons, Columbus Street widens up to twenty and a half foot wide, all the way down to Church Street is the exact same width as Marion Street. Marion's been, street's been two-way since the beginning of time. Uh, we allow parking on Marion Street and it's always been a much busier street than Columbus because it connects Main to Euclid where Church, or Columbus is connecting Main to Church Street. So there's plenty of room, uh, for two-way traffic, uh, from behind Spoons all the way to Church Street. Again, same with as Marion Street, so. And the width between the curves, between the buildings is seventeen and a half feet. Average width of a car is five and a half feet. So you do the math and you can figure that out, but, uh. What was your question?
Mayor, I got one recommendation, uh, because probably you guys will be moving ahead and Ray and I will probably be gone at that point, but, uh, the one thing I noticed was there's no signage to the parking and a gray spot would be by metals. Just make it known because we got a nice new parking lot back there and it's.
Actually, they put, uh, they put parking signs up. They're too small?
Kind of up on the right.
I think they're, I think they're too high too. I, I know they're, you know, very, very high. So maybe we lower them, the size, it'll be a lot better. But yeah, we got new parking. They're blue.
Or some kind of post down on the corner or something. Make it visible. The feedback I received was actually, it was all fairly positive. I did have one individual that, um, I thought brought up a good point. He said, well, you know, this is, and this has been a good project, I think, overall. In its vocation, when we started this, the idea was that we might need an ordinance to close it off temporarily, but then we found out we didn't. But the thought is, give it a few more months and, and in a positive way, we could show how we're gonna soften it up because you have a poll that twenty-five percent were against it roughly, right? Is that what you had roughly for?
Uh, yeah, it was seventy-three, seventy-three percent for, twenty-seven percent.
Okay. So I think, I think right now, I think it's a great project and I, I'm in favor of Columbus Street being utilized in this manner. I think that when you drive by, it doesn't have a very friendly look. It looks like we're, you know, we're like a detour off Interstate eighty. But I think a, a couple of trees put in there with some, uh, mobile planters and just a little softening up for another month or two, just to show the public, hey, this is what's happening. This is what's going on, and then move forward. I just think that, you know, it doesn't present itself like it should have, uh, and of course we had some, you know, cold weather and the whole thing. Would it hurt to, to focus on keeping it closed for another six weeks and just soften it up? I have a couple of suggestions. I could suggest to the mayor offline of a couple of trees that I'd be glad to loan, uh, implanters that could go out there on skids and I'll keep them watered and all that good stuff, just to show how a couple of, of green things on that block will help soften it up.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea because, you know, once we, uh, get through March, the Princeton Arts Commission has to, they're gonna start on their plans and, and it's gonna take some time as well, so I think that's a great idea. I mean, we just leave it closed and we do some things like you're suggesting. You know, we just added a new, uh, light to the back. I don't know if you noticed one of the pedestrian lights we have at the north end of Little Paulins. We put one of those in the back there. It, it, that helps light that up as well, so I think, uh, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I'd be glad to donate those trees on a loan basis and I said, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, great.
No, I just, I, I agree. I think reopening it only to close it probably in April wouldn't make a lot of sense.
I think it would confuse people more.
Sure.
And, you know, if it was, uh, if it was something where we were hearing a lot of feedback that we're really against it, you're looking at like a fifty-fifty, sixty-forty type of thing, then I think, you know, we have more to talk about, but, uh, I've heard nothing but positive on this. I know that, uh, you know, this is being done, uh, you know, to enhance the aesthetics of our downtown business district and that's what we're, we're all about. That's what we set out to do. You know, it doesn't bring, it's not gonna bring people to town, but I guarantee you, once you get people to town through the marketing we do, through the commercials that we run in Quad Cities, and I know Jenica's got some ideas on marketing Princeton through commercials in other communities. You know, once we get these people to town, they see the boutiques, the shops we have, we present them with a great looking city, great looking, the aesthetics, they're coming back and they're gonna bring friends and then those friends are gonna be friends and it's gonna, it's just a continuous thing, so it's all a good thing, so. So at this point, we'll go ahead and leave it closed. We'll go with, uh, with Ray's recommending. I think it's a great idea. And Princeton Arts Commission will get going on their stuff with the Historic Commission and then, uh, we'll come back and be moving on, you know. The only, uh, and then the other thing, uh, food truck vendor guidelines. You know, we're seeing a lot more food trucks in Princeton, uh, now, uh, probably in the last year. It's more than just one. We, we see several. There's several, there are a couple from Princeton. There's several from Peru and from, uh, different areas and they come over. You know, we need to have a, an ordinance in place that addresses, uh, food trucks, uh, guidelines. So it's a level, uh, you know, fair for, for everybody involved, you know, for food trucks, for, uh, brick and mortar restaurants. So just, we're gonna be putting an ordinance together. We're gonna be working on that. We're gonna finish it as soon as practical. The city council will be reviewing it. We'll be adding their comments, suggestions and so on, and then we'll eventually bring it to the council. We, I, it's gonna be done as soon as practical. We wanna get, uh, going on this. I know the fiscal year starts May first. That's kind of a target. They have everything ready to go. So that's where we are on that. Any comments? Okay. Old business. Uh, any new business? Public comment? Just need your name.
Geraldine Woodley. That time? Hello?
Yeah.
Hello?
Is the light on?
No.
There you go. Think you got it.
Got it?
No, think about it.
Okay.
Just keep loud.
Okay, just the reminder of what I said before about Columbus. Number one, at this time of the year, how much traffic? You got a pandemic. I don't think it was a good time to judge it. And the other is, just like you did with the marijuana, you depended on people going to Facebook. There's a lot of us that are not on Facebook. And many times, I'm down the street. You people work, but for those of us that travel the street and you wanna get off of Main Street, you've gotta go all the way or all the way. It's a cutoff. I still don't think it's right. I mean, I agree, give it a better, a longer chance to check it out, but I think just depending on Facebook is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Well, I, I will just comment because we, you know, I know Goldie's reported this in the paper on, on a number of occasions. It's been on the ra, I've been on the radio talking about it. I mean, so people that are on Facebook should be getting the information and if they have something they want to say, they need to follow your lead and, and come to council. So give us a call or send us an email or something and we just, I, I mean, I haven't heard from anybody, you know.
I, I just think it cuts it short and particularly at this time of the year, I don't think there's that much traffic to even, you know. I'm thinking of the summer when you've got the amount of traffic and people wanna move and get a parking place and especially if you've got that nice parking space in the back. Uh, I mean, everybody has had Columbus as a one-way street for years, but, um, anyway, that's my view.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we're gonna try to entertain the motions for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn our regular council meeting this evening. We convene again on Monday, April five, two thousand twenty-one at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been second. Coral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned and thank you all for attending.